One moment. And you get a little got it button on that monitor, which Jacob will take care of for you. And you're all set. Have a good meeting.
The meeting of the City of Zoning Board of Appeals for Thursday, February 16th, 2023. City of Zoning Board of Appeals is committed to providing an environment of respect during meetings. We ask all members to interact and play in any meeting when there is disagreement. We value the participation of our community and want all participants, including marginalized and minoritized communities, to feel welcome and respected. We ask our community members and all who participate to meet these standards to support and respect our community. No, the City of Zoning Board of Appeals meets both in person and on Zoom. And both are participation option. This meeting is being recorded and can be reviewed on City of Zoning Television and Facebook Live. The recorded meeting will be available the following day on Comcast Channel 9 and YouTube. The contact information for Zoom is on the notice. And with that, I will move on to the first application. The first applicant has withdrawn the 72th Way. So we are not hearing that application this evening. So we move to the second application. The application of John and Mary Garrett of 72 Marion Road, City of Nashville, 2066. Requesting special permit fine in accord with NGL 40A, Section 6 and Section 8, N12A of the City of Zoning Bylaws and/or any other relief to the board of closing grants for a lot of construction of an addition to a pre-existing nonconforming single-family dwelling located at 72 Marion Road and increasing the gross core area by more than 20%. Name, address, and our unit for the record.
Sure. Good evening. My name is John Garrett, representing myself and my wife.
Sir, walk us through.
Sure. So we're applying for a single-story addition 14 by 32 with a gross square foot by 440 square feet off the rear of the house. We have four kids, right in the kitchen, and then out of the bedroom.
It's pretty straightforward. There's marking for an existing deck. I assume that's getting demolished. And the one-story addition is going out the back of that.
Correct.
Okay. We have, I know, so it's an existing shed in the back. You want to let them add? You are not touching that.
That will be removed.
That will be removed?
Yes.
Okay. That's awesome. That clears up that piece of it. That's the, oh, that's how we're marking the lot. All right. So I will turn to questions from the board. Point nine goes away. Yeah. Something else is that close. Questions, initial questions from the board. Anything here that we might be missing?
No, I'm sure not. The existing house, obviously, is a several nonconformities, but the new addition does not meet all the setbacks. And you consider the exception used for the average setback from houses on the street to either side. So that's fine. Outside the flood zone. Honestly, I think it's very straightforward.
Right. The information to that shed, right, we brought a side yard, if you will, back in conformity. Anything from the folks in the room on this? All right. Anything from anyone on Zoom? Once? Twice? Nothing on Zoom? All right. Anything else from the board? Want to make a motion?
Let me come over. Uh, let's see. Let's make a motion that the board find that the construction of an addition of a single-family home shown on the plans from Brady Consulting dated November 17th, 2022 does not create any new nonconformities and, to the extent it intensifies any existing nonconformities, such intensification does not substantially detrimental to the surrounding neighborhood. And the board grant relief.
Okay. All clear?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Very easy.
Yeah.
When we get ready on this, we will call up the third application, which is continued from January 19, 2023. The application of Linda Coker, 188 Virginia Avenue, McLean. We're requesting stuff in accordance with NGL Chapter 48, Section 6, and Section 8, N12A of the City of Zoning Bylaws and/or any other relief to the board of closing grants for a lot of raising and construction of streets that are not conforming, single-family dwellings located at 30 Manchester Street. Is anybody here on that application? We have them all. There they are. Okay. Two seconds. Self situated. We advise. Thank you. Name, question for the record, please.
Sure. Good evening. My name is Dana Altavolo. I'm with Maryland Janez and Lance Vares. I'm here representing Linda Coker. And I'm here with Julie Johnson of Custom Home Designs, as well as landscape architect Sean Pappich. I believe he's on here as well. Just to give a brief overview, the property is located at 30 Manchester Street, which is within an R3 zone. It abuts Manchester Street to the north and Hummerock Beach to the east and also has residential lots to the west. And so the site is currently developed. If you'd like, I can share my screen to show some plans.
Sure. If we can.
Okay. Looks like it's disabled at the moment.
We are working on that.
Okay. Good. So as I was saying, there's currently a single-family dwelling with a wraparound porch on the property located approximately 4.1 feet off of Manchester Street right of way. This is a nonconforming, a pre-existing nonconforming structure. Additionally, the existing garage is also 5.8 feet off of the side property line as well to create another nonconformity. The applicant is proposing to develop a new single-family structure with the 4.1 feet to Manchester Street right of way maintained. And we're actually increasing the side setback to the proposed garage to eight feet. So that will now be conforming. Since the last hearing, there was some discussion, if you recall, at the previous hearing regarding the proposed storage shed, which was up in the front left corner of the northwestly corner of the property, separated from the existing dwelling. The owner has worked with Julie and come up a new layout. This layer connects the proposed storage shed to the proposed single-family dwelling with an attached proof to combine and make that one contiguous structure along Manchester Street. Additionally, the driveway, as you can see, has been relocated and reconfigured up of Manchester Street to accommodate that. Other than that, the site plan is pretty much the same. We have added some mitigation plantings over along Hummerock Beach as requested by the Conservation Commission. But I think that was generally the question that the zoning board had the last time we were here. If you have any questions, we'd be happy to discuss them with you.
Turn it over to the board first. We may be coming back to the board in a moment. So I do have a question.
Is this a matter of expanding an existing nonconformity?
Well, that's the question.
Right.
Right? So a couple of things, right? And then that was the question initially, right? So the proposed garage has been moved into conformance, right? So that's eight and a half feet off the side. So that's a longer issue, right? We discussed that at the original meeting. So the continuing, the structure takes along a very similar footprint to the original house. The original structure was approximately 4.2, I believe, 4.2 feet off of, and please, anybody here correct me if I'm incorrect, 4.2 feet off Manchester Street. The new structure is for, the new structure, structured proper, the housing unit, if you will, is still 4.2 feet off Manchester Street. The question then is, the proposed, if I understand correctly, the issue is continues to be this proposed storage shed on piles, which is now 6.2, right? If I'm, again, reading the plans correctly, feet off Manchester, which itself is, you know, not a conforming setback. It is, however, less than the original 4.2 feet off Manchester Street. Now, the question I have here, which is, and is this really an attached structure as part of the overall building? And we have an open deck. We have a covered deck. There seems to be, again, these are plans in front of us. And there seems to be some minimal connection between the covered deck and the proposed storage set, right? So just so that the board are reading all this correctly, and we will let you respond. Bob, am I, from your point of view, am I missing any sort of critical issues, right? That seems to be what we're focusing in on in this version. And I think, for you, that I'm reading the plans correctly, that it is not one contiguous structure. There is an open deck, right, with some arch. There is a covered deck. The overlap seems appears to be, I don't know, maybe two feet.
Can I ask, does the architect have an elevation that we can look at?
Yeah.
Dana, do you have those?
I do. I'm still not able to share, though.
Janine, is he not able to share?
He should be. I can exit out of this.
Sir, PDF.
Do you have a PDF version?
I do. I have a couple of loaded PDFs ready to go.
And you can't share your screen?
It's still saying host disabled participant screenshot sharing.
So.
Or could so.
I don't know. Janine, on the lower green picture screen, if you click on it, what does it say? The green box right there. What does it say? Because I can't, that's her, that's her screen. No, I understand. If she clicks on it, there's usually multiple categories of what they can share.
Yeah, but I don't have it.
No, no.
At the bottom?
At the bottom, where the green.
Oh, you don't have that whole display.
It comes down from the top when you're screening it.
I see. Okay.
Seth, could you make him a host so he can share?
I'm sorry. I fully apologize. I'm sorry. Which individual? Sorry.
Dana Altavolo.
Yep. You should be able to. Janine, I'm going to stop your sharing. There you go. And Dana, you should be all set. You want to try that?
Okay. Everybody see that?
Almost.
Okay, so this is, this is the existing condition. And then these are Julie's plans. For this, I don't know if you want to walk through Julie. This kind of shows along Manchester Street here.
Yeah. Yeah. So the shed roof is a continuous, it doesn't show on the site plan that we're overhanging right there where the cursor is. So there's a section there up to the peak goes and runs into the house. So there's, it's a fairly good connection. It's not, you know, there's a better view, that overview, Dana, on that other sheet.
Similar to Marie's way leading to the lot.
Exactly. Exactly. There's, it's a, it's a good piece of roof. That hip roof on the inside of the courtyard runs into the most part of the house. And then there's a little return gable that runs in over the porch. So there's a pretty substantial piece of roof running in there. Yeah, this is probably good view. Go back to that one, Dana. It shows the dotted green roof lines, the first floor plan. One back. There you go. So, yeah, so you can see that extent. That section is the return gable. And then that other hip line runs right into the roof overhang on the house.
Barely touching.
Well, no, I mean, I would say it's a fairly solid connection. Certainly, because for zoning purposes, anytime an area is roofed, it's considered part of the structure.
Yeah.
Right. Bob, I think our initial design of this house, when I brought it to, the shed was connected to the garage with a port to share roof because we were going to drive in off the Eastman. And that was what made that shed in that detached position work because we're connecting it to a conforming building, which was the garage at the time. And then through our design process, Linda and I decided to eliminate the port to share connector. And it just didn't dawn on me that it was there also for the reason of zoning. So that was my bad that the plan came forward to you last time. But this was our repair of that, is to bring the shed to the house. It actually helped with the entrance. I think it's preferable for the neighborhood. And Linda appreciated it, too, to have the access to the garage straight off of Manchester instead of off the Eastman.
Yeah, it gives you a little more privacy on that area of the side as well.
Yep. Yep.
So if I can keep along with the same thought, it does extend the nonconformity in that it's within the setback to Manchester Street and Crochet. But I would point out that the original design already extended the nonconformity because the house that's proposed is slightly longer than the house that exists. So I don't think it really does anything that already wasn't being done, if that makes sense. And perhaps the board should look at it that way.
Any issue with the plunge pool?
I don't think so. A pool needs to make standard setbacks as a one-story building, like a shed, which in this case would be eight feet.
It's not marked. Right. It's not marked off, but I'm making the assumption.
It looks like it's got plenty of space. I do have an issue with the garage, I believe.
The new proposed garage?
Yes. That showing with an eight-foot setback from the sideline.
Yep.
That works if it's a one-story garage, which it's not. That setback, I believe, for anything beyond one story, anything with a ridge height of over 15 feet, is 15 feet in this case.
That's right.
That's right. I guess, I guess I just, sort of for comparison, is the garage that's being taken down, is that a one-story garage? Or was that higher than 15 feet to the ridge?
I don't have a dimension on the existing garage, but it had a pitched roof on it. I don't know if Linda has a sense of how tall that was, but I don't, I can't speak to an actual dimension on the height of the existing garage.
The existing garage is a one-story garage.
I'm wondering if you're replacing one nonconforming structures with another one or if you're creating a nonconforming structure where none previously existed.
Well, so we're looking at the Google Earth version and it looks like it is a one-story with a pitch roof. A one-story garage. It doesn't work like there's two floors.
Okay.
Is the zoning an eight-foot side setback?
For a one-story garage or shed.
For two stories.
With a maximum ridge height of 15 feet.
In R3?
Someone's.
I'll look it up. There's no, there's no reason I couldn't be wrong, but I think I'm not.
I believe it's eight feet.
Sorry.
There you go.
Both the side yards, eight feet. Is it?
It is. The rear yard is just for the.
Oh, okay, okay, okay. It's the rear yard. I beg your pardon.
No, no problem. That's why we check.
Can I stop breathing again?
Yes. Yes. Send the check.
I apologize.
We are 15, because we're 20.
Inexcusable.
And we are 20 feet off the.
20 feet off that.
We're all 20 feet off the back, so we're. Right, and that's within. Okay. So back to the sort of original setting. Looks like the proposed garage with the living space is within the meets and bounds.
Yeah, you should be. You should be.
Right. We have the main building, again, mostly on the same footprint as the original building, wherein the nonconformity off of Manchester Street, the main building, which the proposed set aside, is maintained. Right? And then it becomes a question, the other, the other pieces, and it's just that they exist. There's dacks, walkways, some existing structures that are going to be removed. So it's going to be a little tighter. And it's now the proposed storage set. So let's turn to anybody in the room from the community, anybody from the community in the room that wants to comment? No? Anybody online wants to?
I'm going to have to stop sharing.
Seth? Yeah.
And you have no virtual hands raised, so.
All right. We have an actual hand raised as well.
Sorry.
No!
I have an interesting conversation with Conservation Agent Amy Walker this afternoon.
Sure.
And this project went before their commission last night. And it made me, and I haven't fully digested what that conversation is and what the couple of emails that I have from Amy and also from from the Massachusetts Office of Coastal Zone Management. It's possible, it seems to me, from what I've heard and kind of intuited, that this design may be required for conservation purposes to be modified in some way. So my only thought would be, if the zoning board is going to approve this design based on the drawings before you, which is all you can approve, there might be wording within the decision that would say something to the effect, if the design is modified and the relief requested or the relief required is equal to or less than the relief granted by this decision, that these folks don't have to come back and tell the zoning board even though the design has changed.
I'd rather see them come back. I'd rather see them go through the generations of conservation to see where.
Yeah, that was my suggestion to sort of simplify.
No, and I understand, I understand why that suggestion and to, right, we can make a contingent and say, if it's within basically these meets and bounds, then we can, right? But what we have, but to your point, what we have here is a structure that is effectively nonconforming in certain ways. It continues to be nonconforming in certain ways. And how that changes for conservation may be material because where I'm coming out on this, other people, I'm going to differ, is that we are in fact introducing nonconformity. And then the question is before us, whether that is substantially detrimental to the neighborhood. A different structure, whether if it has any nonconformity may or may not be substantially detrimental to the neighborhood, depending on what it looks like. So on this, I tend to, I would agree, although that's the, sort of from my world, the right answer, right? Let's not do this twice. I would, I would, I can agree with you on this. Now, it's something that we can get, you know, on calendars quickly, that we can get on, right? Disposed quickly, if we think it's not a problem.
So the question would be, what was conservation looking at, right?
I think the overall, the overall hush I got was that if any changes are made it would reduce the building's footprint somewhat.
Yeah, I think, yeah, I think that is going to be something we're going to be moving. If we're going to change the footprint of this whole thing, that should, I mean, they could change the footprint and not need any relief.
Yeah.
Right.
I can't speak for conservation, and I just really can't.
Wow. See, because how we craft that in a contingent way would, there's a version of it where it basically is the whole thing shrinks into itself. A problem, right? But it may not be that, to your point. So I appreciate it. I'm, I will, I mean, I'm happy to hear from the board how they want.
My only concern would be if the design change and connection of that existing post shed change.
What does it look like?
You could also introduce that into what? Because I think that's our only real concern, right? Is that connection.
I, I mean.
The connection of the fact that it's increasing the entire nonconformity.
It's a nonconformity.
I mean, I would ask the question, could you get it to eight feet? I mean, you're at 6.2. Architecturally, I don't see, and it's easy for me to say from here, you know, but why couldn't you do, why couldn't you make that conforming?
Well, it's a 20-yard setback. It would be under 30.
Right.
Oh, I'm sorry. That's correct.
Or the averages of the homes I've used, like.
I'm sorry.
Which will still be more.
Which, so 30 is a lot healthier than that, but wouldn't work at 12. But that would be my only concern, is how the design. But if it doesn't, if it.
All right.
I mean.
I'll read you something that I wrote, if you want to.
Sure.
I just wanted to, you know, maybe provide some quality on the Conservation Commission, if that's possible. So this is obviously a dune environment, barrier beach environment. So it's obviously a very sensitive area. I'm sure you've probably seen pictures or visited the site. And currently, it looks very much like a, not so much a dune environment. It's, you know, it's a grass yard. It's, you know, it's a, it's a grass yard. Um, the, the house is that grade or just above grade. It has a, a block foundation, it has a cellar slab, all within a, a dune beach, which, you know, none of which is anything that is recommended or meets the, uh, the, uh, performance standards of the, the Wetlands Protection Act for a, a dune or a barrier beach environment. So what we're proposing here is to eliminate as many of these non-conformities and, and different things that don't meet the, the standards for the, the Wetlands Protection Act. Um, so it, the question came up on a, on a different property, but very similar idea. So I, I recently reached out to Greg DeCesar with DEP. He kind of confirmed, although CZM has their own interpretation, and their interpretation is a no adverse impact. DEP's interpretation of no adverse impact is if you can create, um, you know, benefits to the dune and the barrier beach, that is what they consider to be no adverse impact. And that's a benefit for the site, it's a benefit for the, for the beach, the, um, the, the barrier beach area, you know, it's just going to allow the dune to function as it, as it, as it should function. So all of these things are, are benefits, you know, by lifting it up, by removing all the pavement, um, you know, getting the, the concrete patios off the, off the ground and things like that, and creating, um, the, the, um, the, the coastal dune area between the, the seawall and the existing, or the, the, uh, proposed house where we'll have beach grass plant and things like that are huge benefits in the eyes of DEP, and that's who's ultimately going to be approving this. Um, so in my conversation with him, he, he thought that those things would all have positive impacts on the, on the beach and that this would in fact meet the, the performance standards, uh, for this property and, and for a, a dune and barrier beach environment, which it would provide no adverse impact to the dune and the, the barrier beach. So he, he felt confident that that was going to be something that would be approvable.
And Dana, what would the changes that, um, can you go over the changes that were suggested based on land that we're looking at?
Um, sure, this, this plan actually incorporates basically all of them. Um, you know, the, the house, as I mentioned, it's a existing house, is on a foundation, has a cellar slab, a concrete slab floor. That's all going to be ruined, there'll be more solid foundation.
Dana, the changes that Amy, um, that the commission suggested last night, so the wall along the easement, so the changes, I think, that the commissioner looking for from us the next round, didn't have any impact on the footprint of the house?
Okay.
Or the house itself?
Something to do with the house, with the structures. It was just that there's a wall proposal line that, that crushed thirteen-foot-wide easement. Um, and other than that, they were, they were really just looking for planting, planting environment, um, planting information, maybe some landscape features as far as, you know, plant beds, walls, you know, decorative walls, nothing, nothing structural and like that. It was all kind of minor land type features. The, the house itself, they were happy to have it off the ground, um, on a, uh, piling foundation so that the, the sand can drift and, and blow beneath it and, and water can move freely throughout the site if, if it comes to that. Um, so there, there was nothing really related to the actual structures as far as our, our meeting last night went.
So is this wall anything that would be zoning, or not a big wall?
No. Yeah, no, it's just a, it, it's more of a fence wall, it's a landscape feature, really.
Right. Um.
All right, I think that's the issue.
I think that's the issue, and, and I think
I think the issue is that that cover deck disappears, and it becomes a red carpet. But if there's not much change, there's no reason.
That would happen, that's nothing to do with anything conservation.
Yeah, that's nothing to do with it, but that would be
That's correct.
Again, that's not what's on the plan.
Right, right, it's not what's on the plan.
So, so the, the motion would be to accept this plan or
Yeah, you're accepting that plan.
Yeah.
And I will, uh, I think, any other comments? All right, in that case, I would make a motion that, um, on applicant's, uh, request for special permit, um, for the raise and reconstruct of thirty Manchester Street, if they ask, pursuant to the site plan, um, dated January thirty-first, twenty-twenty-two by Merrill Engineers. Uh, I note that the board find that, uh, the proposed raise and reconstruct, as delineated, uh, eliminates some non-conformities, introduces some new non-conformities, but the new non-conformities are not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. Do you approve? All right. Uh, second, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Name and vote.
Great, yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Obviously, this is, again, subject to whatever consideration comes up with.
Yeah, can you make, can you change the plan?
All right, thanks very much, have a great night.
Well, they can come back, it's a different plan.
General apologies to any harm that's been done.
Well done.
The job, our guests, we have an op-ed here.
Time to show the stall.
All right, so we're, uh, on the fourth application of Stephen
Thank you.
Lurkley. Fifteen Manhattan Way Cohasset, requesting special permit finding in accordance with NGL forty-eight, section six, and section eight, ten-point-two, sitter zone bylaws. Uh, and/or any obligation to make grant to allow the raising of the structure to be non-conforming in the surrounding dwelling, one sixty-one Captain Pierce Road, and increasing the Rose, Rose Core area by more than ten percent. Name and address for record.
Thank you. Uh, Gregory Morris, registered engineer, Morris Engineering.
Steve Yornman. Yornman, Morris, good to see you.
Thank you.
Want you to walk us through what you're doing here.
Sure. We're here for a finding ordinance with Manchester Law, chapter forty-eight, section six, indoor special permit for section eight, ten-point-two of the bylaw. For a raised rate rebuild at one sixty-one Captain Pierce Road. The existing sites located in the R2 zoning district, it's previously developed with a single-family home being built around nineteen hundred, um, in approximately seven hundred seventy-one square feet floor area. The existing lot itself is non-conforming with respect to frontage. It has ninety-five point eight feet required. Lot width, it has ninety-four feet, where a hundred and twenty-five feet is required. And lot area, it has nineteen thousand two hundred ninety-five square feet, where twenty thousand square feet is required. The existing structure on the property is non-conforming with respect to the rear yard setback. It exists at thirteen and a half feet, where thirty is required, and side yard setback at twelve-point-six, or fifteen's required. The proposal here is to take down the existing dwelling and construct a new one. The new one is moved up further, uh, to the middle of the lot essentially. If you look at the plan, I've shaded the proposed house in brown. This location complies with all setbacks from side and rear, uh, therefore corrects both the non-conforming rear yard and side yard approachments. The new home is approximately thirty-two hundred square feet, which represents three hundred and fifteen percent increase. We feel the board can issue the requested relief because single-family homes are in a lot of use in the district. The new home complies with all setback requirements. The new home eliminates the two non-conforming, uh, side yard and rear yard approachments, and there are other homes of similar size found throughout the R2 district. Turn it over to you.
Thank you. Anything from the board? Uh.
No, I'm good.
Folks in the room. Yes, sir.
Name?
Bruce Arvites, twenty-three Ganapash Lane.
Thanks, Bruce.
Order of the Water Resource Protection, uh, excuse me, Water Resource Commission. Uh, this house is in the Water Resource Protection District. Has a fifteen percent, uh, coverage limitation, which, based on nineteen thousand square feet, comes out to be about twenty-five on the coverage.
Okay. But that's the footprint coverage, right? Not the square footage of that, the full square footage.
Right.
Right. Non-coverage, uh, right, non-coverage. Uh, sure.
The plan notes that it's in the Water Resource Protection District itself. Um, the requirement in the district is you are allowed to go over the fifteen percent lot coverage, but you're not allowed to exceed twenty percent lot coverage. If you're in that in-between period, you have to provide, uh, artificial groundwater recharge. We've done that, we've designed a drywall system for that difference that we make up.
Anybody online?
Let's see.
Okay. Uh, board?
My concerns is
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I can't. Michael Abate or I, I went by what you need, Seth.
Hi there, uh, I'm, I'm good. Hi. Michael Abate, Cheryl Bradstoss, we're actually the abutting neighbors for one sixty-seven, on one sixty-one. Uh, I think the, the piece that we wanted to mention here, it's not so much that it, that property proposed is non-conforming, but, um, you know, as someone who sees this property regularly, uh, this would be a complete leveling of the property. Uh, this, the, the existing or former, uh, property owner who was here for about thirty-five years or more, uh, they allowed the entire vegetation, trees, everything to, to flourish and develop naturally. So, um, there's a lot of privacy as a result that's been developed both for the property here, but also for the, uh, neighbors around, including ours. Uh, so I think that's something that we wanted to be cognizant of and call out here that is a concern for us. Uh, the, the obvious three hundred and twenty pers, three hundred and twenty percent increase is, I think, clear. It's articulated well. Um, but it's pretty, it would be a pretty dramatic change, I think, for the entire surrounding seven or so homes. Uh, so
Thank you. And, thank you. And, yes, more? I can't.
Paige Tobin.
Hey, Ms. Tobin.
Hello, um, good evening. My name is Paige Tobin, and I'm here with Victor DeRober. And we are two abutters, um, five forty-one Countryway and five forty-five Countryway. I think our concern mirrors the body's concern, um, regarding the vegetation and the privacy. My house, which is five forty-five Countryway, also has a hill that abuts, um, this property with a gigantic rock. So I also have a concern about, um, if, if this, if the property was going to be leveled, what impact there might be on that hill and whether it would dislodge the giant rock, which would then fall into my house, Indiana Jones style.
Okay. Uh, thank you. Name and address.
One fifty-seven, Captain Pierce. I, um, echo their sentiments. Um, it would completely change the landscape of the whole area. They did, um, let their yard grow into a forest. Um, and the new house is going to be literally perched over my backyard. I will have no privacy at all.
Oh, I, I would, thank you. Um, I would make it clear to all the neighbors, uh, that in fact, the home as it currently exists does not meet the required zoning board setbacks, right? And is in fact, uh, too close to the number of areas. Uh, and that the new home, um, in fact, meets all those setbacks, and the only non-conformity is the fact that this lot, um, is about seven hundred square feet too small for an R2 lot. And that, um, the front yard frontage is five feet too small. Um, and, uh, we have one more. Oh, yeah, and the width is about twenty-five feet too narrow. And but for those issues, they can build this without even coming to us.
Exactly, but there are those issues.
That's right. Um, but, uh, but those issues, in fact, do not, uh, make this, uh, not rise to the level of us looking at whether this is substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood, because there are new, no new non-conformities, in fact, that they're eliminating. Uh, anything more from the board?
I would just, you know, I think, what, if someone had purchased a home to move into it, they could freely cut down all those trees, so, and you could be up, and they could just do it. So it's principally sort of the same thing, right?
This could be a vacant lot.
Correct.
With sand or dirt in it.
I, so we can't, I don't think in the end of the day, we can weigh in on that.
No, I mean, again, if this, if they were if there were new non-conformities, right? Then the question would be whether those new non-conformities would be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. Right? And they, these comments may play to that now. But, uh, I would, we appreciate it. We appreciate that it's not what the neighbors aren't used to.
Right, it's going to be sixteen feet for my property line, then the house, the whole back of the house, when we look in my bedroom. Basically.
We've got a bigger number.
Okay. Um.
I have a, a slider, a balcony there with a glass double door there. House is going to be with the entire back of, I think the widest part of the house is facing my bedroom, looking in my slider, in my bed.
Understood, and in, and in the R2 zoning district, people are allowed to be fifteen feet from, from exactly that position. So I appreciate it, um, and I, I hear what you're saying. Um, anything more from the board?
Yep.
There's not a whole lot to say. It, it, it fits in the box, meets the setbacks. Uh, it's disappointing that we're going to clear cut another lot. But there's not a whole lot we as a board can say about that.
One, people differ as to whether they want an overgrown lot next to their home or not.
Or a nicely brand-new house.
Right.
With the landscaping.
But that's, you know, personal preference. Um, anything else from the board?
Yeah, um, I, actually, you can't even find the house on Google. It's, it's Every single angle, I couldn't even find the house through the face, so, um, and I, it's sad to me, too, when, when a whole lot is, um, is cut for building. I would hope that the builder would think about privacy, because if they're going to either, if you're going to either live in the house or, and be a neighbor, or, um, try to sell it to, you want some sort of privacy. So one would, one would hope that there's a discussion with the neighbors on, like, possible vegetation that might, might
Yes, you know, if I could speak
I would love for you to speak about that, because there's not a lot we can do based on this, like, fancy green book, but, um, we do want people to work together and live next to each other and figure out solutions.
Yeah, it's, it's my comment, sixteen-year-old, but I will not be living in the house. There will be a builder that will put this house up. Um, but as far as the neighbors that are at the rear of the property, who I think are on the Zoom, on Zoom screen, the new house is substantially further away from them. So that area behind the house is kind of a hollow down in there. We don't have any plans for that, other than cleaning up the house that's there. And the house that's there is extremely close to those homes. Um, and they are recently built, one with a fifty-foot, uh, special permit lot, a few years ago. Brand-new, beautiful home. And I think that the woman that spoke was probably in the, um, the Pierce house, the big house out front that Frank Snow rebuilt. Uh, there's no plans to touch the big rock that's out there, anything like that. We're moving away from that and, and actually cleaning that area there. So I think that they're going to be fine with that. Um, the neighbor at one, is it one fifty-seven, I think, that's, that's in the room. Um, I believe they're the ones that have the beautiful landscaping next to us, right next door, and their lot was pretty much cleared to the lot line. And they've got a nice lawn back there, it's growing in. I think they're actually putting a hedge in there as well. Um, I, the only thing that I can do is ask the builder, um, to at least chat with the neighbors when it comes time to do some landscaping in there, and see if he can do something to maybe, you know, help add a little bit more in those areas or something like that. But as far as
That might be complimentary, to say, right?
Yeah.
That would be very much appreciated.
Yeah, uh, and again, I, I won't control it once I sell it, but I'm selling it to a friend.
Okay.
So I'm hoping that he will, he will do it, and I could introduce you to him as well.
Sure.
Um, but as far as the special permit or, or the, the section six finding that we're looking for, I've been doing this forty years, this is probably the simplest one I've ever done. I've been doing this forty years. This is probably the simplest one I've ever done. Uh, we're, we're getting rid of as many non-conformities as we can. So, uh, you know, again, I, I appreciate the board. The board, I think, is doing exactly what should be done in this case. Uh, if we, if we were too close to a lot line, they're right. It's a whole different ballgame if we are doing something with one of those non-conformities, but we're getting rid of all the non-conformities around the house itself. And hopefully it's going to be a beautiful brand new house there and it'll be complimentary to the neighborhood. As soon as that plan is complete, I can probably get it to the neighbors. So if I see what the house will look like, they're working right on that now.
That would be fun.
So I, I'd be glad to do that. And I will still owe it when we play this down.
Okay.
So I'm glad to be over and knock, knock on the door and chat with anybody that can.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Fair. Thank you.
Great.
Um, anything else anyone wants to go ahead? I have a motion from the board.
Yeah, I can do a motion. Um, motion to approve the, the raise, yeah, what we have a raisin reconstruct of a single family, um, home shown on plans from by Morse Engineering dated one seventeen twenty twenty three. Um, does not create any new non-conformities and to the extent it intensifies any existing non-conformities, such intensification is not substantially detrimental to the surrounding neighborhood and that we grant the release.
I second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now, like, uh, the applicant's, um, attorney, my case, is willing to write this down and forward it to you if there are a couple of you in your classes.
Please, I can still lie here.
I appreciate it.
Great.
I know you did. I, I did one. All right. Um, on our final, thank you all. On our final application of the evening of Matthew and Amanda McCarthy, thirty one Roses Lane, City of Mass, requesting special permit fine NGL forty eight, section six and section eight, ten point two of the city zone by law and, and/or any other legal award to grant to allow the construction of accessory structure on pre-existing non-conforming lot located at thirty one Roses Lane and increasing the rose core area by more than twenty percent. So Morse, we have you here again.
Yes, thank you, uh, again for the right, Gregory Morris, registered engineer, Morse Engineering, representing the applicants, Matthew and Amanda McCarthy, who are on the Zoom call with us tonight. We're here seeking a finding from Master General Lodge F forty eight, section six and/or a special permit with zoning by law section eight, ten point two to allow construction of an accessory structure on a pre-existing non-conforming lot. The property is at thirty one Roses Lane, which is the McCarthy's residence. Uh, it's located in the R two zoning district. It's developed with an existing home, um, being approximately twelve hundred square feet in size and built in nineteen sixty three. The home is fully compliant with all setbacks. However, the lot itself is what is non-compliant. It's non-compliant with respect to frontage. This lot has forty five feet of frontage versus a hundreds, the requirement in the district. All of the zoning requirements comply. The proposal here is to construct a two-story, twenty eight foot by thirty six foot detached accessory building. The building complies with all setbacks, front yard, side yard and rear yard. The first floor would be garage space, but the second floor would have finished space, approximately seven hundred and fifty square feet. We feel that the board can grant this requested relief as detached structures are allowed accessory use to single family homes. The building complies with all setbacks. There is no change in the non-conforming frontage proposed. The lot complied with zoning at the time of its creation. I'd also add that today we did receive a letter of support from an abutter at twenty nine Roses Lane. I forwarded that to your secretary immediately prior to this meeting. So I don't know that you've read it. Uh, but I'll read it real quickly. To whom it may concern, my family and I lived at twenty nine Roses Lane. We are direct neighbors with Matthew and Amanda McCarthy. We have no objections to them building a garage with a guest suite on their property next to us at thirty one Roses Lane. If you have any questions, please feel free to call me. Thank you, Samuel and Jessica Lee. They are the direct abutters to the left or to the bottom of the plan, looking to the, to the bottom.
To the south, correct, to the south. Uh, and. Uh, so that's great. Um, we did have one question to make it clear. Um, in the, in the letter, this is couched as a, and, and not that it would necessarily matter, a guest suite, um, there is a client?
Yes, there is a client. It's basically a full living space.
Okay, just so we are all on the same page. Um, so there's no change to anything other than because of the accessory dwelling, the side yard setback will now be fifteen point one feet. To summarize.
Correct.
Anything, uh, from, uh, the stormwater bylaw? We don't need a stormwater bylaw application because we don't exceed the threshold.
Correct.
So we're at eighteen point three, drawn to the twenty percent.
Correct.
Anything from the board?
Just an accessory structure, not.
An accessory structure. It would need a permit from the planning board to be used as an accessory dwelling, which is separate. Uh, we have not made that application in the future. They might, it is noted that it would not be used as an accessory structure on the plan, general note fourteen.
What? It's not going to be used as an accessory?
Dwelling.
Dwelling.
So.
Yeah, right.
It would be an accessory structure.
This is, right.
Accessory structure.
Why exactly I asked the question? It will be an accessory structure. It will not be an accessory dwelling. It will however have a home.
Yes, it will.
It will, it will not have a kitchen?
It'll likely have a, a kitchen and probably lack a, a stove and a range. So it'll have a wet, wet bar, same, yeah.
But not full kitchen facility. For reason.
No, I mean, with those provisions, um, I don't, no problem.
Okay. Anybody in the audience? No. Anybody online? No? That's it? Uh, we have a motion internally? No? Okay, I'll do it.
I saw it written on the script.
So on the applicant, uh, application for a special permit um, for an accessory dwelling at thirty one Roses Lane pursuant to the site plan drawn by Morse Engineering and dated one nine twenty twenty three. Um, I move that the board find that, uh, the proposed accessory dwelling uh, introduces no new non-conformities and to the extent it intensifies any existing non-conformities, those existing non-conformities are not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. I move that this application be approved.
Oh, sorry.
All in favor?
Aye.
Granted. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. We're writers this morning.
One question more. I guess we're here.
Sure.
Is this, will you vote for the conservation commission?
Yes, it does.
Okay. I didn't know because it was an isolated desert table, if there were different.
It'll need to go in front of them. That's the next, the next topic.
Which round? Yep. Okay. Uh, do we have any other business questions?
Uh, minutes.
Minutes. Last one to step. What bits made?
January eleventh and nineteenth. Motion to approve.
So I, I can vote to the, uh, to the eleven? Here to the eleven. So I, I, I can vote yes on those. I will stand on the nineteenth because that was my question.
I can vote for all.
I make a motion that we approve the minutes for January eleventh and January nineteenth.
To the meeting.
Secondly, enough.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Put that on the round.
Oh. Uh, and with that, we will adjourn the meeting. Thank you all. That's what we got?
Right, Seth.